In compliance with chapter 21 of law nineteen seventy five, the title of the Oklahoma Weeks Act, I have been noticed as senior provider associated by the act. Our notice of open for the meeting was provided in the notice January sixth, twenty twenty five. So, and also not to be stripped of sight. Can I repeat this? Yes. 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 A lot of our students here tonight, I like to call Patricia Canadian and academic booster of the little students, Mr. Martin, for our science fair awards.
Pretty loud. Pretty loud. All right. Everybody, thank you for coming. Travis, a lot of us, we're trying to be sure. As short as possible, but you know, this is a great moment to celebrate science and academic achievement. It's an extra thing that being academic, it's Dancheck Martin, myself, I go members of that group, can provide enrichment access to children so that they can develop a love of science. Next year we'll do a history fair, so all those come in and back. So with that, we're going to start with our kindergarten winners. There was a huge tie for third place in kindergarten. So many third projects, I'm going to call all, if you're in kindergarten, get ready to come on up. I'm going to call your name one at a time, so just come on down and we'll give a show for you. Okay, so third place winners, we have a big tie among Abia Chakaborti, who I got this from walking water, a team of Jenna Coleman and Serena Janine, Electric Circus. If that's you, come on down, get a trophy. Zion Katene for Scion Soap. Giorgio Bryce for Dinosaur Facts. Arjun Kotiyan for Lifecycle of Plants. Sandro Pagano for Dino Doom. Noah Freyport for What Are Colors Made Of? Come on down. Kabeer Saxena for How is a Rainbow Four? Art Sudani for Light and Shadow. Don't leave, guys, keep the trophy, stay down here, it's my good job for kindergarten, stay down here, come on, come on back, come on down, we're going to get a picture. Art Sudani for Light and Shadow. Jackson Thomas for Dinosaur Die. We have lots of great pictures. And Adonis Colton and Giovanni Piper for Mount Donkey. Okay. Art Sudani, donkey. Did you? Did you? Yeah. Okay. You're going to take Giovanni's picture. Ready? Ready? That's Giovanni. Okay, that's the third place. Going to second place, don't get stuck. Don't go away, don't go away. Seventh place went to Ree Ross for Project Cloud and a Shop. First place in kindergarten, that you, we have itself, lots of children. Okay. All of our kindergarten winners, you guys, they're going to get one big picture. They get one. Thank you. We have kindergarten scientists. Great job kindergarten scientists. All right, you guys are done, thank you so much, you go back and see the first grade. You're ready, we're going to do first grade next. And then second grade, kind of get ready, you see how it's going. Okay, in first grade, in third place, we had another tie. So we had two projects that won third place. One of them was Angelo Provenzano's project Explosive Truth of Volcanoes. Is Angelo here? And the other one was team of Ibrahim Azar, Nicholas Gilchrist, and Lewin Townsend for Rocket Chemistry with Fuel. I see them coming. Third place, here come Ibrahim, Nicholas, and Lewin. Second place was also a tie. Two different projects got second place for first grade. One of those projects was Myra Pachaboina for Tooth Decay Egg Experiment. And the other went to Johanna Williams for Strawberry DNA Extraction. Those were second grade, uh, first grade, second place projects. And then first place in first grade went to Ria Shah for Yummy Gummy Bears. So many amazing projects in first grade, can you imagine? Tooth Decay Egg Experiment, I like the pun there. Great job first grade scientists. On to second grade. This one we had, uh, one, only one in third place, that was Shania Sharma for Which Food Has the Most Sugar? Shania here. Second place in second grade went to Avni Garg for Rocks Rock. Third grade, third grade, get ready. Do we have Avni here? Great. And first place in second grade went to a team of Ansh Sharma and Zara Gogri for What Is Sound? That's second grade. Third grade's ready, right? You ready, third grade? Great job, second grade scientists. Okay, third grade, in a third place in third grade went to a team of Timothy Conklin and Amelia Hindman called Tough as a Tarda Grade. Tarda grades are awesome, we usually see at least one every science fair. Second place in third grade went to Radha Kotiyan for Mystery of Floating Liquids. And first place in third grade went to a team of Radim Agarwal and Karishma Shah for All About Protein. Great projects, you guys. We're going to get a third grade scientist's picture, and fourth grade, you're up. Great job, third grade scientists. Okay, here comes fourth grade. Third place in fourth grade, we had a team of Charlotte Asparia, Amelia Maish, and Stella Nardello with a project called How Blood Pumps Through the Heart. It's getting serious in fourth grade. Second place, they could not be here tonight because not only are they scientists, they're athletes, and their softball game got rescheduled. So second place went to a team of Juliana Marfino and Audrey Knoll for Defying Gravity, but they can't be here tonight. First place in fourth grade went to Druva Pachaboina Guiding the Skies. Right, Juliana and Audrey didn't just come, no, they're not here, okay. Great job, fourth grade scientists, two more grades to go. In fifth grade, in third place was Alex Dudek for Tornadoes. That was an awesome project. I really liked that one. Second place went to a team of Avyuk Malamath and Siddharth Thadavarti called Aurora Borealis. And first place in fifth grade went to Nunzio Provenzano for Let There Be Light. This is the last year that this class will be able to do a science fair, so they did great. I've seen their names more than one year, and next year we hear of your last opportunity would be the history fair, so I hope you'll come back for that. Great job, fifth grade scientists, thank you so much. And for sixth grade, their last fair with us, we have, in third place, we had a big team, Sophie Bergen, Lucia Nardello, Peyton Pessek, and Kayla Rodriguez for Hot Air Balloon. Second place in sixth grade went to Keon Agarwal for Buoyant Forces. And first place in sixth grade went to Shivin Hakani for Acid Rain. Again, a lot of these names came back year after year, won prizes year after year, so proud of you, wish we could have more fairs for you, but you guys are going off to middle school, you're going to be amazing. And I see other faces in this crowd, people who won in previous years, it's nice to see you all, too. So that's sixth grade scientists, congratulations, you guys, we'll miss you. Next year's the history fair, thanks everyone for showing up for this, and we'll see you next year.
Just want to thank the Academic Booster Club, thank you, Tricia, thank you, Lisa, thank you to everyone who volunteers for that group. If you want to take a moment, we have a couple more student presentations, if you'd like to leave at this point, please do so, so we'll give it a couple seconds.
That's great, Lisa, thank you.
Thank you for letting us do that.
Okay, our awards continue. I would like to call up Mr. Guerrero and Mrs. Lopinsolo to celebrate our spelling bee winners. I also want to thank Mr. Guerrero and Mrs. Lopinsolo, especially Mr. Guerrero for taking the initiative to conduct the spelling bee every year and working through our challenges. Thank you so much, Mike, come on up.
This winter, for the second time, our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students were invited to participate in the Scripps National Spelling Bee as part of our upper elementary word study program. A little bit about Scripps, biggest spelling bee program in the country, and, you know, by inspiring the exploration of words, their goal is to illuminate pathways to lifelong curiosity, celebrate academic achievement, and enrich communities. This year, we had over one hundred and twenty-five students participate across our five elementary schools, which is about thirty-five, forty higher than we had last year, which shows that this program is growing, which makes me very excited. Our school level bees took place in late January, and then the winner from each building was invited to participate in the Essex County Regional Spelling Bee, which took place at the South Orange Performing Arts Center, SOPAC, on March second, where I was really honored to watch them participate and compete, very competitively, by the way, against over seventy fellow school champions from across the county. We feel very fortunate to honor our five Nutley School champions. Tonight, we have one from each of our five elementary schools, you've made us very, very proud. From Spring Garden, our winner was Colin Staggers. From Radcliffe School, Elias Serge Narin. From Yanacost School, Avyuk Malamath. From Lincoln School, Julian Trinidad. And from Washington School, Brandon Sablon. All right, let's give one big round of applause for all of our Nutley Spelling Bee winners.
I'd like to invite the board down for our presentation this evening. I'd also like to thank all the students for coming, and if you'd like to leave now, maybe
renewal cycle, specifically in the areas of library media and career and technical education.
a good time, we're going to move on to our program review presentation for Mrs. Lopinsolo and Mr. Vicarello.
I'm joined by Mr. Vicarello, who led the CTE program review this past year, and I want
No, they canceled.
to give a big thank you also to Ms. Rabino, who led the library media program review. So the curriculum and instruction office here in district includes myself and supervisors who support teachers implementing the most up-to-date instructional practices. A large part of that work is ensuring that our curriculum is up to date and reflects what we know to be the most innovative approaches to teaching and learning. State code requires the review of curriculum at least every five years, and so we have each of our content areas in a different section of the five-year cycle to ensure compliance. The cycle begins with a new curriculum written in year one, and in year one, the new curriculum is fully standardized and implemented. The curriculum may include new instructional resources, and it also provides an opportunity for professional development to teachers to support the implementation. Years two and three, the approved curriculum continues to be implemented consistently and with fidelity. Our content supervisors and myself continue to support teachers as they implement, and adjustments are often made during these years to scope and sequence. So we look at the year as it closes, and we look at pacing, and we look at the order of the units, and we make any adjustments that we feel would lead to a more productive program. Year four, the program review is really what we're focusing on in our presentation tonight. The program review is where we look closely at a specific content area in more detail. We look at the current curriculum, we look at the New Jersey Student Learning Standards to ensure that our current curriculum is aligned, we call that a gap analysis. We research best practices within the industry, but then also within our neighboring districts to see what other districts are doing well and who we want to emulate. A larger part of the program review also involves looking really closely at student assessment data. We also explore staffing and infrastructure that may advance the program overall. Year five is the implementation of a draft curriculum and the pilot of any new resources. After that pilot year, we then determine if we're going to fully implement that resource or if we want to possibly pilot a different one. We've also sometimes piloted two resources with select groups, and then we'll gain feedback from teachers who were part of the pilot around which one we want to move forward with for full implementation. This next slide shows where each content area is currently in the five-year renewal cycle, so this system allows for dedicated time to assess and adjust each content area. However, you will notice that things can be moved out of order if, for example, a couple years ago, when the state revised its health and PE standards, we pulled that out of its current place in program review because we wanted to move up the program review to ensure compliance. So as long as the DOE doesn't update any standards, each content area will rotate through year upon year for full review. So just to summarize, our year four program review process includes looking closely at student assessment data, researching best practices, neighboring districts, attending conferences, doing some research through surveys, gathering and analyzing input from stakeholders, and exploring staffing and infrastructure that may advance specific content area programming. We're now going to move on to a summary of the Library Media Studies Program Review, followed by a summary of the Career Technical Education Program Review. Before beginning, I want to thank Ms. Jenna Rabino, the District Supervisor of Science and Technology, who conducted this program review this past year, and I'm presenting her findings on her behalf. So each program review is guided by questions that seek to really closely examine the programming and articulate next steps. Here, guiding questions for the Library Media Department included, is our programming aligned currently and appropriately to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards? Is the curriculum being implemented consistently, especially with a program like Library Media, where we have singletons in each building? We want to make sure that the students are getting the same experience across all of the elementary schools, for example. Is our curriculum aligned to best practices? And does our curriculum meet the needs of all of the learners? For some context, this slide summarizes the current library media curriculum and programming. You can see elementary students attend library media once or sometimes twice weekly, depending on their building schedule. In addition to signing out books, students participate in lessons that align to three specific units for grades K through six, life literacy and key skills, computer skills and coding, and design thinking. Middle school students engage in push-in lessons for research projects that connect to a variety of different content areas, including ELA, science, and social studies, to name a few. And high school students do not currently have a library media course. Program review involves data collection from a variety of sources and stakeholders. You may have seen a survey come through in the fall, asking you to provide feedback on our library media program and our CTE program, and the goal really is to look at multiple perspectives and kind of get a three-sixty perspective of input on what we're doing well and how we can improve moving forward. The survey included a variety of different types of questions, but I'll just show a sampling here. The sampling of data here from students, when they were asked what specific skills they learned as part of the library media curriculum, the responses highlighted book borrowing, and we were also pleased to say that they highlighted online safety and digital citizenship, something that we're really pushing with our students. STEM projects and coding were a little bit lower on this list, and that's something that's helpful for us in our curriculum revisions, to start thinking about how we can kind of beef up that section of the curriculum to ensure that kids are really getting the most out of their time in the library media center. We also surveyed parents, they chose the same two skills as the most popular, with literacy skills and appreciation, a close third as well. Based on the survey responses, as well as research from other districts, we're proposing the following recommendations. Staffing, the recommendation we're making is to try to incorporate small group instruction during any open periods, our library media specialists do this to a degree now, but if there is time in their schedule and they're able to see some small group reading groups, that's also helpful, and so we're going to explore that a little bit further. On the program and courses angle, we're going to be leading professional development sessions, specifically Ms. Rabino will be doing this throughout the year to ensure that the new curriculum is implemented with fidelity and that all of the teachers have time to articulate and get together and plan. That's often difficult with them being in all buildings across the district, so making that a priority will definitely be an outcome from the program review. On the curriculum side, incorporating specific STEM lessons and projects to support that engineering and design unit, we noticed in the surveys that students didn't really rank that as one of the more engaging parts of the curriculum, and we want to look to see how we can make that a little bit more hands-on or maybe bring in some additional resources to support that. Also on that end, incorporating nonfiction research skills and incorporating AI exploration. Under Resources and Technology, we are exploring a possibility of library maintenance, maybe asking parent volunteers to help with some of the library maintenance, help shelving books. We're also looking at utilizing some of the Scholastic Book Fair money and maybe tapping into the NEF to help purchase some new books to keep our libraries current. And also, one of the things that came out of the program review was the keyboarding skills for students, we now switch to iPads in our library, so one of the recommendations that we piloted with one of the buildings this year is purchasing the keyboards to go with the laptops so that students can still get practice keyboarding, even though the iPad is the device they're utilizing. Another important recommendation includes continuing our partnership with the Nutley Public Library. This collaboration continues to be a valuable part of the library media programming. Some programs already in place that we'd like to grow are the summer reading presentations that the library gives to elementary schools each spring, collaboration with our multilingual parents to access library resources. We have many, many field trips that come across my desk for signatures to the Nutley Library, they're a great partner with us for that, as well as publicizing library events on our district website. This final slide for the library media section of the presentation outlines specific next steps over the next several years, and it's really more of an internal planning document, but here you can see how support will be provided to staff on curriculum changes, as well as ideas to utilize the library media specialists to support literacy, if they're able. We will also explore how parent volunteers, again, could be utilized to help with library maintenance, maybe book checkouts and that sort of. Program review involves data collection from a variety of sources and stakeholders. You may have seen a survey come through in the fall, asking you to provide feedback on our Library Media program and our CTE program. And the goal really is to look at multiple perspectives and kind of get a 360 perspective of input on what we're doing well and how we can improve moving forward. The survey included a variety of different types of questions, but I'll just show a sampling here. The sampling of data here from students, when they were asked what specific skills they learned as part of the Library Media curriculum. The responses highlighted book borrowing, and we were also pleased to say that they highlighted online safety and digital citizenship, something that we're really pushing with our students. STEM projects and coding were a little bit lower on this list, and that's something that's helpful for us in our curriculum revisions to start thinking about how we can kind of beef up that section of the curriculum to ensure that kids are really getting the most out of their time in the Library Media Center. We also surveyed parents. They chose the same two skills as the most popular, with literacy skills and appreciation a close third as well. Based on the survey responses, as well as research from other districts, we're proposing the following recommendations. Staffing, the recommendation we're making is to try to incorporate small group instruction during any open periods. Our Library Media specialists do this to a degree now, but if there is time in their schedule and they're able to see some small group reading groups, that's also helpful. And so we're going to explore that a little bit further. On the program and courses angle, we're going to be leading professional development sessions. Specifically, Mr. Rubino will be doing this throughout the year to ensure that the new curriculum is implemented with fidelity and that all of the teachers have time to articulate and get together and plan. That's often difficult with them being in all buildings across the district, so making that a priority will definitely be an outcome from the program review. On the curriculum side, incorporating specific STEM lessons and projects to support that engineering and design unit. We noticed in the surveys that students didn't really rank that as one of the more engaging parts of the curriculum, and we want to look to see how we can make that a little bit more hands-on or maybe bring in some additional resources to support that. Also on that end, incorporating nonfiction research skills and incorporating AI exploration. Under Resources and Technology, we are exploring a possibility of library maintenance, maybe asking parent volunteers to help with some of the library maintenance, help shelving books. We're also looking at utilizing some of the Scholastic Book Fair money and maybe tapping into the NEF to help purchase some new books to keep our libraries current. And also, one of the things that came out of the program review was the keyboarding skills for students. We now switch to iPads in our library. So one of the recommendations that we piloted with one of the buildings this year is purchasing the keyboards to go with the laptops so that students can still get practice keyboarding, even though the iPad is the device they're utilizing. Another important recommendation includes continuing our partnership with the Nutley Public Library. This collaboration continues to be a valuable part of the Library Media programming. Some programs already in place that we'd like to grow are the summer reading presentations that the library gives to elementary schools each spring, collaboration with our multilingual parents to access library resources. We have many, many field trips that come across my desk for signatures to the Nutley Library. They're a great partner with us for that, as well as publicizing library events on our district website. This final slide for the Library Media section of the presentation outlines specific next steps over the next several years, and it's really more of an internal planning document. But here, you can see how support will be provided to staff on curriculum changes, as well as ideas to utilize the Library Media specialists to support literacy, if they're able. We will also explore how parent volunteers, again, could be utilized to help with library maintenance, maybe book checkouts and that sort of thing. I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Vicarello, who will discuss the Career Technical Education Program Review.
Thank you, Mrs. Locan Solo. Good evening, everyone. My name is Vincent Vicarello. I am the supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts and Career and Technical Education. I'm going to give an overview the same way Mrs. Locan Solo did. I want to thank her for walking me through this process and as well as my staff for their input, as well as the community. So the Career and Technical Education Department, sometimes you'll hear it as CTE, and what that is, is a department that is career and technical educated, focuses on curriculum instruction in the area of 21st century life and career skills. What does that entail? A lot of hands-on application, collaboration, problem-solving, communication, as well as the technical aspects within a specific content area. These students are exposed to a variety of these 21st century skills and trades. We are fortunate to say that here at Nutley High School, we still do offer the trades to our students and give them that practical application within the classroom. At John H. Walker Middle School, we currently have one full-time staff member, and the courses that are available to our students are Grade Seven Technology Engineering One and Grade Eight Technology Engineering Two. These courses do not need to be taken concurrently. A student can take it in seventh grade and not in eighth grade, or vice versa. If somebody takes it a certain, another elective seventh grade, they can then take Technology Engineering Two in Grade Eight. These courses are electives. This is a choice that the student does make. At Nutley High School, there are a significant amount of teachers that tend to our students. We have eight full-time staff members, one three-quarter time staff member, who is currently split with Library Media, and one full-time social studies teacher that is taking on a course load of financial literacy as well. Within our Career and Technical Education Department, we are fortunate enough to receive Carl D. Perkins Five Grant Funding. In that program, our programs funded are Radio TV, which is Arts and Audio Visual Arts, Audio Visual Technology, Hospitality and Tourism, which is our culinary arts, Information Technology, Networking and Cisco, and our Health Sciences, which falls underneath our Science Department, where I work with Mrs. Rubino very closely. We are fortunate as well to offer dual enrollment opportunities for our students in the Career and Technical Education Department at Nutley High School. In our Radio TV program, our students in the Radio TV Two and Three have the opportunity to earn credit for two different courses enrolling in those two different years. Also, Introduction to Engineering Design Honors is affiliated with various institutions. That is for the student to choose as they get to that point, if they wish. Here at Nutley High School and throughout the state, there are graduation requirements for CTE as well. Each student must fulfill five credits of a practical art, as well as the two and a half state mandated credits for financial literacy. As you can see, I'm not going to go down this entire list, but these are all the courses that are offered here at Nutley High School. These can also be found on our website under the Career and Technical Education Department as well, and also in the Nutley High School Program of Studies. Here, you can see that there are a multitude amount of classes that are designated as honors also. In our data collection, as Mrs. Locan Solo discussed, we surveyed many, many different avenues, being staff, students, and community members in Grades Seven through 12. Through that data collection, we have noticed that enrollment has increased significantly since 2021. Majority of our courses are in high demand. Throughout that as well, not all students and parents are aware of the programs that are offered here at Nutley High School. From that finding, this current year, in the spring, we offered a virtual CTE night for parents to attend, which was also recorded and can be found on our website. Many of the, much of the feedback that we've received from many of our students is that there are scheduling conflicts, and that's the primary reason why students cannot get into a specific CTE course. Also, we are giving the students the opportunity for project-based, hands-on learning to be able to apply these life skills. Recommendations. Through here, most of our CTE curricula has been updated over the past three years. There are some that need an update over this summer, one of them being our Introduction to Business, Introduction to Business. With that, the removal of Fundamentals of Investment Management will happen, where they will be merged into the Intro to Business class. The reason from this with our staff, the finding is that the Fundamentals of Investment Management is very closely aligned with our Business and Financial Management class, and there is a lot of crossover. Therefore, students taking both of those courses are getting a lot of repetitive curricula. Within our programs and courses, academies were explored, looking at our model districts. Some offer academies, which allow students to progress through a certain cluster that they will focus in on. This will be explored more by myself as well as staff. In our Business Department, as I discussed, with the removal of one of our courses, our half-year courses, but looking at the addition of social and digital market, media marketing. This would act as a fourth level to our marketing program. Looking at the addition of a DECA chapter, or reinstituting a DECA chapter here at Nutley High School. This is a CTSO, as we call it in the career and tech world, which is a career and technical student organization. This is the Distributive Education Clubs of America. Possible addition, right now it is being piloted, an AP Business Principles and Personal Finance course. In Industrial Arts, currently, we only offer Woodworking One and Metalworking One, exploring the idea of giving those students who are extremely vested and interested in the hands-on arts and the practical arts, the opportunity to take a Woodworking Two or Three, as well as a Metalworking Two or Three. This would also help without being competitive with our vocational schools within our county. For Culinary, the addition of an Introduction to Culinary Arts. This is a class that would mirror our Intro to Industrial Arts for a specific cluster of students. For our Resources and Technology within business, to sustain using our online platforms that we currently use, with also, once again, the addition of DECA. If I can just explain that a little more, DECA is for emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in many different fields within this: marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Culinary, turnover of our consumables and our everyday use items, such as pots and pans that haven't been replaced in quite some time, appliance service plans, since these are used every single day, replacement of appliances, such as new stoves in Room 221, new knife sets, and looking and maintaining our facilities. We will also explore, on my behalf, the purchase of bulk food items from distributors. For Middle School Technology, they currently use LEGO Mindstorm EV3s, continuing to update those so they do not go obsolete. The same goes for our Robotics program here at Nutley High School. Industrial Arts, the continuation of our Project Lead the Way partnership, as well as rotation of new tools. For Staffing, our recommendation is the addition of one Industrial Arts teacher to offer those higher-level woodworking, metalworking classes, practical electricity, also engineering and drafting and design courses. Once again, the next steps and timeline, as you can see here, this year we are currently in the program review, so for Year One, it is Begin Staffing Conversations for the future growth and needs of our students here at Nutley High School and within the Nutley Public Schools. The Programs and Courses, we're conducting site visits, meetings to explore academies. Also, creating Hospitality Management as a standalone course, since it is now an honors course. Adjusting the Program of Studies to reflect the courses offered at Nutley High School, and send our Business Department to a free PD each year. Money talks. Once again, curriculum will be reviewed, piloted, and for our Resources and Technology, it was under the recommendations that I said previously.
That concludes our presentation on this year's program review. I just want to take an opportunity to thank both Janine, Ben, and Jenna Rubino, who's home. They put a lot of work into this. Their staff puts a lot of work into this, and every five years, we get a chance to look at each program, and it makes us great. Thank you very much for your hard work, and thank you to the board for allowing us to do this work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bania. If you don't mind, I'd like to see if our student report, Mr. Matt Lee would like to report first.
Before he goes, can I mention something, Mr. President?
Sure.
Just change papers here. I just want to congratulate you. I know you're a part of Data Jam, and you're going to speak to it. Before you have a chance to talk about it, you did a great job with you and your team. My understanding is you won one of the competitions, Car Crashes, Crime, and Income in New Jersey. That's a great achievement, and I want to recognize you before you give your speech. Thank you very much for doing that.
Congratulations. Yes, so we wanted to move you up, just in the event you need to. You could stay, you're welcome, but if you have to run, you have other things to do. That's why we wanted to move you up.
Thank you. So since our last Board of Ed meeting, the National Honor Society induction took place. Seventy-five students were inducted. Congratulations to all those students again. And on May 1st, we had, Building Bridges Club held its annual International Night of Culture at our Night of Nations event. This event celebrated and promoted diversity in our community. We had various foods, music, student-led performances, art, and cultural attractions. The two-week battery of AP tests concluded last Friday on May 16th. There are still a few makeup tests that will be occurring this week. And our school participated in the National Data Jam competition. This is a data science activity and competition for high school students to introduce, encourage, and engage young people in data science in any subject area. This program is sponsored by Caldwell University and affiliated with University of Pittsburgh. Our school had two teams. Team A's area of research was on mitigating gun violence, and Team B's area of research was car crashes, crime, and income in New Jersey. The culminating activity required students to speak publicly about their research findings with an assembled panel of college professors and professionals in the data science field. Team B was the Eastern Regional winner for the 2025 Data Jam competition. Upcoming, we have the Spring Choral Concert, which will be taking place tomorrow, May 20th. The NHS Art Show will take place on the 21st. The Rutgers Allied Health Program Summitive Test will take place on the 22nd for those enrolled in the program. And we're looking forward to our annual Raider Fest next Wednesday on May 28th. There's going to be a Senior Scholarship Award Ceremony, which will take place Thursday, May 29th, and Senior Prom will be taking place on June 5th, and the graduation will be June 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And like I said, you're welcome to say, but if you need to leave, you can. Mr. Bania, our superintendent, report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I begin this report, I again ask for a moment of silence for member, moment of silence for member Joseph Malanga, who passed, recently passed away. Mr. Malanga served our community as a Board of Education member from 1982 to 1986. Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Nutley School Community. Over the past several weeks, the district's administrative team has continued to work diligently through the entire 2025-2026 school budget, with the goal of preserving student programs while addressing the financial realities we face. Although revenues for the upcoming year are now set, the budget remains fluid. This means we will continue to make responsible decisions throughout the year in support of our core educational mission and student opportunities. On tonight's agenda, you'll find a resolution to increase the district's paid or participate athletic fee. With this adjustment and through efficiencies found during our budget review, we are currently able to offer the programs with the same levels that are currently offered during this school year for next school year. This includes all junior varsity and freshman levels. We recognize this is important to our students and families, and we will monitor participation trends closely to ensure sustainable operations moving forward. I would also like to congratulate the freshman baseball team, I believe was here last board meeting, as they won yesterday's freshman baseball tournament in the Oval. From what I have heard, it was a great event that was coupled with the township's first Farmer's Market of the Season on Booth Drive. We look forward to supporting the township and the athletes with the Farmer's Market event on Sundays throughout the summer. Also tonight, the board is being asked to approve paraprofessional appointments aligned to newly restructured paraprofessional roles. This restructuring is based on a thorough assessment of student needs and classroom models. We remain committed to following all IEPs and ensuring that students in self-contained programs continue to receive the appropriate support as required by law and district policy. I am proud to share that Nutley Public Schools has again been recognized as one of the best communities for music education by the NAM Foundation, an honor we've now received 16 times. Thank you, Mr. V. This award is given, this award is given to districts that demonstrate exceptional commitment to music education and ensures access for all students. Congratulations to our students, staff, families, and music boosters for upholding this tradition of excellence. As we near the end of the school year, here are a couple more dates of activities. Mr. Lee mentioned most of the ones pertaining to the high school. We have the Junior Olympics on June 2nd and the Lead Picnic for our sixth graders on June 6th. And one last reminder for all of our celebrations, preschool celebrations will take place during the week of June 2nd. The teachers will share the details per the building in class. Kindergarten promotions are June 12th. Sixth grade graduations are June 13th. Our eighth grade promotion is June 13th at 9:00 a.m. Nutley High School will commence, have commencement ceremonies on June 19th, scheduled for 6:00 p.m. currently. This is subject to the weather and may be adjusted up in the day as we get closer. The last day of school for students is Monday, June 16th, with single-session days on June 12th, 13th, and 16th. I do ask you to please support the Nutley Educational Foundation by attending their SIP Saver Spring Fundraiser on Thursday, June 12th, at the Kingsland Manor. The tickets are now available on the district website. It's a great organization. They're always looking for support and volunteers. You can find it on our district website. Finally, I need to report the September to December Hib reporting. In accordance with the New Jersey Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, I am presenting the district's biannual harassment intimidation biannual harassment intimidation and bullying report, summarizing activity from September through December 2024. During this reporting window, a total of 29 HIB investigations were conducted district-wide. These incidents were thoroughly investigated by our trained anti-bullying specialists in each building. At the elementary level, there were 10 investigations with three confirmed HIBs, one confirmed case at Yanacaw and two at Yanacaw School. The motivations were based on gender and other protected characteristics. At John H. Walker Middle School, there were 13 investigations with seven confirmed HIBs. The motivations include race, color, religion, national origin and others. At Nutley High School, there were six investigations, two were confirmed HIB incidents with motivations including gender, gender identity, sexual orientation. In cases where HIB was confirmed or conduct violations occurred, consequences and interventions included disciplinary measures such as detention, suspension or probation, social probation, counseling from school-based staff or referrals to outside providers, a reflective assignment, schedule changes, increased monitoring by staff, including parent administrator conferences and HIB-specific training for students and in some cases faculty. We also have prevention efforts, including HIB training that all staff participate in and curriculum-embedded structures in competent kids' caring communities for K through 5 and Ruler and Lead for grades 6 through 12. We also have activities including Spearing Week, advisory lessons and counseling programs. Just today, we had a group of students from our high school on the Oval with partnering with the Health Department on certain initiatives pertaining to inclusive measures. HIB resources and reporting tools remain available on the district website. I would like to thank our anti-bullying coordinator, Mr. Joseph Capello, and all of our building anti-bullying specialists, as well as the principals, for their continued commitment to safe and inclusive learning environments. I hope everyone has, enjoys the long weekend coming up. Please remember, we have a single session day scheduled for Friday and the district is closed on Monday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bania. Mr. DeVita, our business administrative reporter.
Thank you. On tonight's agenda will be the approval of our food service management company for next school year. Proposals were advertised and a walkthrough of our facilities was held last month and one company responded, Pomptonian. After approval at tonight's meeting, all the required information will then be uploaded to the state software for the state's final approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVita. We're going to go to committee reports. Ms. Dancheck-Martin, academic?
Yes, Mr. President. The academic committee met on May 13th. In attendance were Terry Quirk, Steve Gilberti, Tom Delia, myself, along with Kent Bania, Janine Locunsolo, Karen Greco, Ian Vmeister, Dennis Williams, Tracy Egan, Amy Jaccio, Joe Pyro and Joe Dwyer. Mr. Pyro provided an update on athletics. Mr. Williams and Mr. Dwyer provided information on the high school's 25-26 schedule, dual enrollment offerings, secondary world language curriculum revisions. Ms. Egan and Ms. Jaccio provided an update on special education and strategy services. Mr. Bania provided an update on paraprofessional staffing and the potential of sublease for the St. Paul's preschool property. Ms. Locunsolo revealed field trips and PD requests. The next meeting of the academic committee is scheduled for June 11th at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dancheck-Martin. Mr. Fraginels, finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on May 13th. In attendance was myself, Sal Ferraro, Tom Delia, Jeanette Mekes, Cam Bania, Michael DeVita, Teresa Laurie, Michael Perigi, Janine Locunsolo, Karen Greco and Ian Vmeister. The committee received updates on facility projects, including the Lincoln Auditorium chairs, Lincoln hallway floors, middle school media center, the middle school temporary library, the middle school classroom conversion and the digital signage at the high school and the middle school. Committee also reviewed information on the athletic budget, including coaches, levels and athletes, reviewed information on the general fund budget cost analysis in comparison with the current budget, reviewed information on the paraprofessional restructuring, reviewed a comparison of course offerings for Nutley High School for the current budget compared to next year's, discussed pre-K costs and contracts and requests for a proposal for food services and the sports position for next month. And we reviewed resolutions, including donations and food service management company for 2025-2026 school year, and the next meeting has not been scheduled. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Fraginels. We now come to that portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on reports, resolutions and all school-related matters. Our Board Regulations Number 0167 allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes and we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all those wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. And please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions?
36 Center Street, Denise Blue, I don't know if you guys heard that. Can't believe it's the end of the school year already. I think, Kent, you answered my first question. The pay-to-participate fee, is that only related to athletics or are those other school activities as well?
Currently, it's only related to athletics.
Okay, thank you. So you anticipate keeping things status quo for another school year?
Right now, right now it's not included in the board resolution. I think as we move forward, we're looking at everything.
Okay, great. Certainly seems like a fair thing at this point. Under number five, Approval Preschool Grant Amendment, preschool learn time, is that the new facility that's going to be at Bloomfield Ave? Which one is that?
Yeah, which page was that?
It is page four, number five, Approval Preschool Grant Amendment.
Page five?
Page four.
Page four.
Number five?
Yep.
You got it?
I got it, thank you.
Preschool learn time, I just wasn't sure what the, all the individual preschools were called. Is that the one on Bloomfield Ave?
Sure.
Yeah. Yes, preschool learn time, we currently partner with in our preschool program to run classes, A-class for the district. These resolutions allow them to operate our St. Paul's location and to pick up additional classes. Please understand that under, the way preschool is set up, they work with us and we have oversight as to their programs. It'll be the same preschool program offered through them that we would provide.
So that, that's the only thing that the amendment is based on, that that is, transfers to the new facility on Bloomfield?
Correct. One resolution approves the sublease, the other one approves us changing the allocations from district to provider classes.
Okay, and in terms of allocation of resources, it's a grant, does all of the money, everything is covered completely, nothing comes from the Nutley district budget, nothing at all?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's a frustration on the part of a lot of people, it might be a good idea to make that a little bit more transparent to everybody because I know a lot of people and I've been trying to explain it with what limited information I have, that it's grant money, it's not coming out of this money and I think people are seeing this brand-new, beautiful preschool program that's happening and I've had a 30-plus-year career in early childhood special education, so I know the worth and value of that and universal pre-K. I'm very happy that Nutley is doing this, but I think a lot of people are concerned that things are being taken away from our older kids, but yet we're building this program up. So maybe, I mean, even if it's just a suggestion, some sort of transparency, some sort of, something that goes out to the community explaining that that is all grant money and nothing's coming out of the budget.
That's, thank you for that. You know, it is something we do talk about. Unfortunately, sometimes it goes to a limited amount of people that, you know, pay attention to what we're saying here at the board meeting, so we will definitely look into seeing what we can do to send it out to the greater public.
Great. Or even just, just parents at least, but the greater public, yeah, a lot of people have a lot of things to say that don't have kids in the district. I appreciate that clarification, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Hi, Kim Van Wert, 34 Ivy Place. Just a little bit more clarification with the sports portion of it. Is it per sport that you would pay? Is it one fee for the year?
Yeah, so currently, the resolution moves the pay-to-player $150 per family with additional $75 per student in that family.
So per sport or for the year?
Oh, I'm sorry, for the year.
For the year, so it doesn't matter how many you play? And is it for all sports, so even varsity sports, even varsity players will be paying that as well?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's just, that's also just an increase from 100 that was currently done this school year.
So it was already in, implemented prior to this?
It was already implemented, it has been for many, many years. Sometimes it just, there's times it was higher and then boards have reduced it, but that's, yeah, it's been, it's been at 100 this past year.
Perfect, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Jover, you know, 111 Brookdale Ave. Mr. Chairman, can you tell me where we're at with the investigation with the Department of Education?
Are you referring to the forensic audit?
Misappropriated funds, whatever you want to call it.
Are you referring to the forensic audit? Is that something, Ms. Mekes, do you want to, you want to respond to that?
A request was made to the state to ask them to do a forensic audit. That request was denied. They indicate that Nutley can do a forensic audit, but Nutley would have to pay for it. We went, I'm sorry, I'll just finish. We went out for, with a request for proposals on a forensic audit. We received several responses to the proposal and the board will decide whether or not they want to move forward.
Well, I know you had a cap plan, you had a corrective action plan, what is the corrective action taken? There was a complaint put in to the Department of Education to bring it to this. So where are we at right now? How many, I would like to know, how many board members have been deposed in this investigation? There was a complaint filed, so we brought it to, where we're at?
I'm not aware of any complaint that was filed. I don't believe...
That's why, that's why we have a monitor.
No, we have a monitor because there was a loan that was taken from the state.
Excuse me, we have a monitor because there were some fiduciary problems and she's been sent here.
She...
My, my, my answer is, we're paying for a state monitor or a budget manager. Where is it at right now? Is it, is it a done deal? Is it finalized?
What then? I apologize, I...
The investigation, is it, is it done? Is it a done deal now?
It is done as far as I am concerned, the board has to decide if they want to go further with a forensic audit.
Well, where's, my, what I'm looking for is...
I will do, I will, I'm doing a report in June, a public report in June, and with that will be a determination as to what we have done to ensure that checks and balances are in place, that some of the areas of weakness in controls has been, has been corrected.
Is there going to be a report, are we going to receive a report from the DOE's investigative unit?
No, as I said, they said that they would, they were not going to do a forensic audit and that we could do it, but we would have to pay for it.
And what would be the cost if the town, if the town has to do it?
It would be somewhere between $55,000 and $85,000, I'm sorry, $55,000 and $80,000.
So we're not going to do it then?
The board is going to discuss it this evening in executive session.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions to come before the board? Okay, seeing none, could I have a motion to close the public commie portion? All in favor? Okay, we're going to move on to our resolutions. Ms. Dancheck-Martin, could you take academic?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions one and two as written.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Balsamo.
Yes.
Ms. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilberti.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes. Mr. Balsamo, administration?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move administration items one through five as written.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Balsamo.
Yes.
Ms. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilberti.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes. Mr. Fraginels, finance?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to move finance resolutions one through nine as written.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Balsamo.
Yes.
Ms. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilberti.
Yes, with the exception to eight, no for eight.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes. Ms. Quirk, would you take personnel?
Yes, I'd like to move personnel resolutions one to two as written.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Balsamo.
Yes.
Ms. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilberti.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Abstaining to one and two. Is there any old business to come before the board? Any new business? Okay, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJ SA 10,4-12, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education recessed to close executive session at this time to discuss contracts and personnel. Be it further resolved that the results of the discussions will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. I get a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Make a motion.
Okay, thank you, everyone.